Okay, call this meeting to order at 4:10. We'll begin with the pledge allegiance, flag is in back of us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is we have a TA with the power professionals, CESP. Mr. Lenny has explained it and Frank has explained it. Does anyone have any questions? entertain a motion to approve this tentative agreement. Frank? Seconded. Andrea? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you, folks.
400.
Four. One absent tonight. They're looking to take it to their ownership and hopefully they'll do so right after the Thanksgiving holiday and we hope to have a final agreement that we'll present while we're presenting the budget to the Budget Committee on Tuesday night, the Thursday, the 4th of December.
Okay, I believe we were on or near page 2320-2. And I think we might want to...
Start on three because that's part of salaries? Or even, even four?
Just like wanted to defer that until we get to the other part.
Right. Because we also have to bring in...
That was on District Administration, 2320-2.
Yep.
Okay, so we'll hold off on that page. And the next page. But we could do 2320-5, which is workshops, travel. Motion to approve?
Motion.
Move Pepper. Second. Andrea? I mean, that's pretty...
Yep, straightforward.
Straightforward. All those in favor? 400. Contracted services.
So we have a few small dollars that we use each year. Sometimes when volunteers, not employees, but volunteers are going to work with us and they're going to be in a position that requires fingerprinting. We try to compensate them for that or make that payment for them. So there's $200 for that purpose. The big number that you see there last year, contracted services. I put the rent here because we didn't create a rent line otherwise for budget. And so, assuming that we're still staying in the temporary realm, I haven't budgeted for that figure. We'll move, you know, we'll move when we can. But this line, you'll see it go over, but it's already in the financials going over because this is where I'm sticking the, sticking the dollars.
Motion?
Motion.
Pepper? Second. Frank?
Yep.
Discussion? All those in favor? 400. Now, labor relations, next year is a...
We'll be negotiating with the teachers, we'll see. So we did not change this. You don't see much in the way of spending last year, but we overran some of our legal costs when we were doing all of the work on the project ramping up. That's why you see an actual in 1617. But we expect we will use that moving forward. You can see that the actuals from 1415 and 1516 that we were negotiating with the, with the associations, both of them before.
That looks a little light.
It does, you know, we've been pretty good with our legal account in the budget section of the board that we just used and we share the dollars back and forth. So I think because we kept that number strong, we'll be okay.
Okay, if you're comfortable with that. Okay. Move Andrea, seconded.
I'll second it.
Discussion? All those in favor? Professional development?
I got started with some classes in 1617, I'll own some of this personally because you've got a dollar number here that's for course reimbursement. You've kept, in the central office, the superintendent has her terminal degree and Jessica is there as well. I've been working on some schooling, but I didn't in 1718 take anything but a single class. So I, we'd recommend that you leave that level moving forward to cover what I hope will be some broader coursework.
Okay.
Move Andrea.
Seconded, Pepper. Any discussion? Is there a way we can cut the total? Like two grand? I mean, you're at 36. Your actual this year is almost two. I'm just saying, and I know you've got it up at 8,000, but I think six would probably, can you deal with six in the account?
It really is, has to do with any workshops, not workshops, courses that is taken by someone in the SAU office. Right now, it would just be Nathan because Jessica already has her CAGS. I'm not going back to school.
No.
No, I, I do not want to keep that. Yeah, the season ticket, I do not want to give up on. That is a, that is vital for us. That's all the professional development around. The new laws, workshops on the elementary school administrators, collective bargaining, we go to. Personnel in the spring, we go to. The Christian McCall, the technology conference, so. And if we don't use it, by the way, we let somebody else use it, the ticket. Because it's a ticket, you buy a ticket. And so, I've given up my...
Oh, I'm not questioning that, I'm not questioning that. I'm just saying, can we cut the six to four?
You mean eight to six.
No, I'm talking about the NHSAA season ticket, we're going to leave alone. I'm talking about course reimbursement, can we reduce that?
So that would be basically two courses. Versus three.
Yeah, I mean, you haven't, we haven't finalized the contract. The contract calls for eight credits at the UNH rate, which is beyond the six now, but...
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? I just want you to know, that's a big increase from what actuals were and that's going to be a question at the board.
I think what we can do before we finalize the contract is we'll have, we'll take that out. And then, then that won't be a concern.
Well, you have to have, that doesn't make sense.
No, if you can justify it, that's all right.
I haven't signed it yet, so we'll...
No, no, if you can justify it, that's by all means, you can do that. But I'm talking about the large increases that stand out.
They'll be up for question.
They'll be up for question, that's all I'm saying. You justified it and that's fine.
I will be able to justify it.
Yeah. Okay. 2327, we pay our maintenance. Motion? Move Frank. Seconded, Pepper. Any discussion?
We put, we added $500 in here for this current year's budget only because some of the equipment that we're using, we've had since we started in '11. We haven't had a hit yet. So I think it's enough until we start to see a real trend.
Okay. All those in favor? 400. Office equipment, it's pretty self-explanatory and it's pretty close to what it's been.
I make a motion to accept it.
Second.
Move Frank, seconded Pepper. All those in favor? 400.
So with the telephone on the next page. When we, when we see E-rate funding come through, sometimes if this account gets, sometimes I'm able to hit it with a little bit. I don't remember off the top what happened in 1617. But a chunk of this is cellular and the other is consistent with what we do have for lines. There's a little bit of long distance, but most of these are covered. So the 6,300 is pegged to what should be real numbers if I don't use a little E-rate offsetting.
No, that's a, I don't find a problem with that. It's only up a couple hundred bucks.
I'll make a motion that we accept it.
Move Frank. Seconded Andrea. Discussion? All those in favor? 400. Postage? Is this just the SAU office?
It's, it's the whole SAU, yeah. The whole SAU office, special ed and the business office and the...
What about Hampton?
The buildings have their own accounts that you'll see when you get to the principals' accounts. Yep.
And where's special ed come out of?
Generally, yes.
Second.
Yep. Unless it's being done in the buildings. But if it's being done by the, by the special ed office, yeah, it's here.
So if it comes out of Jessica's office, it comes out of our, if it's done in the schools, it usually is done out of the principal's account.
Okay, the only reason I'm asking the question. Okay, so you had an influx of special ed students. All those special ed students get paperwork, I know, because Maureen mails it out. I have to run to the damn post office, whatever, and mails it out. Will that increase? Because your base has gone up. That's what I'm asking.
But that would come out of the account at Hampton Academy. That would not come out of this account.
And I think what we've had is an offsetting, right? Because you're seeing some more paper that actually has to go out by mail that way. But at the same token, we've done less mailing of some of the elements coming out of the buildings because we've gone so much electronic.
Okay.
So, because I don't think you're going to see any increase there either.
Okay, that's fine. Just been moved and seconded, further discussion? All those in favor? Supplies?
I'll move it.
Move Pepper. Seconded Andrea. Discussion? All those in favor? 400. Books, printed material?
Move it.
Move Pepper. Seconded Andrea. Discussion? Frank? Your actuals are $1,213.27 and you're budgeting 750?
Right, because last year, we did two things. We, I helped with some materials for a responsive classroom. I also helped for the mentor program and those people all get materials and books to go along with their training. It's usually a summer training. Some of it is covered by the Title II grant, but not all of it. So that's why you see a jump in that. But we won't do that this year because we did it, we've just done it, so.
Okay. Further discussion? All those in favor? 400. Internet access?
Here, I'm budgeting for an estimated increase here because assuming that we're here for the majority of next year, we can't move at the start of the school year because we won't necessarily be in until the school year starts and our focus wants to be on the kids and the building. And after that, we need to focus on restoring our space to what the space needs to be for us to go in because it's been classrooms again, if we're going back into the Marston space. And then we hit the budget season and then it's Christmas. So my sense is that the majority of next year, we're here and we're right now preparing to ramp up because we've added some bodies here and there's some work going on in this office. And the bandwidth is basically, it's what you get at home for your house. And so, we're budgeting that to go up. And as a result, if it is three and a quarter, that's, that's the number. It hasn't, it wasn't that this last year and in 1617.
Well, I expect it to go up.
Yeah, and in 1617, it was, we, in 1617, we weren't spending much at all because we were migrating on to the fiber network when we were at Marston, so.
Motion? Frank? Move Frank. Seconded Pepper. Further discussion? All those in favor? 400. Software, licensed support?
Self-explanatory, I think.
Well, the...
Little bit up.
Well, it's 16...
I make a motion to accept it.
Okay, move Frank.
I'll second.
Seconded Pepper. So discussion? I just asked it, it's 16 grand and we only paid 11.
So, so the actual in 1617 was appropriate. I think that ASOP got charged somewhere else in 1718. And then that has seen an increase, our disaster recovery has seen an increase and now we've added this free and reduced online service from MySchoolApps, so.
All those in favor? 400.
These conversations lead you to be reminded of how important it is with the buildings and the staff in general that are involved in the process of purchasing to charge to the appropriate line because when you look at it and say, well, that must be down. Well, it's not supposed to be down. I'm supposed to expect this and this and this. But sometimes they do, they charge them to other accounts just for not knowing or for making mistakes.
2320-11, that's just a placeholder. Move Pepper. Seconded Andrea. I don't think we have to discuss as much. All those in favor? 400. Software support?
Like the software, it gives us a lot of functionality, but boy, they keep backing it to us every year. Three, three and a half, four percent.
Motion?
Motion.
Move Pepper. Second. Frank? Further discussion? All those in favor? 400.
Furniture? These two are just placeholders again.
Let's do the two together.
Okay.
Let's do the two.
Move Pepper. Seconded Andrea. For both. Is that the SAU?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, we'll go on both of them at the same time. 2320-12. And the next one. 400. Dues and fees, SAU?
I'll move it.
Move Pepper. Seconded Andrea. All those in favor? 400.
This, when we were talking about the strategic planning conversation, this is one of those accounts that I expect this year will support that. In the year we're in, I just bring you back to that, we were talking about that Tuesday night in our regular meeting.
We didn't spend money last, much money last...
We didn't last year. This year, you'll see...
But we did the year before.
And you will this year. It's...
Okay. Uh, motion? Andrea? Seconded. Frank? All those in favor? 400. Okay, one of 2,400.
First one, table?
Yeah.
Second one, same?
Go to course reimbursement, which is 2,410. Well, we, oh, okay.
This is for the, your three principals. Your, sorry, your five, your five building administrators, yeah.
Just ask a question, did they get unlimited course reimbursement?
They have the same that I have, eight credits at UNH. In this case, we've gambled a little bit identifying those that are completed and have reached their terminal and aren't moving forward. And we think that for this next cycle, we probably won't use as much, so we cut it in half.
So you've spoken to them, kind of?
Yes, yeah. We, we know that, we know that there's only a couple of them really that are, that are in a position to be continuing and one of them is finishing right now, so there's just one left.
Nathan's finishing.
Nathan Sallor is finishing up his CAGS and...
What about Anna?
Anna's, so we've left the dollars in case Anna can get, you know...
And Tim?
CAGS.
I've already, no. Tim has a CAGS.
Okay.
And Dave has indicated, no.
But somebody could have a master's in a CAGS and they could decide to get another master's, in theory.
Right now, there doesn't seem to be, right now, there doesn't seem to be any interest in...
Looks like they're holding tight.
Talking into that kind of...
All right, move Andrea. Seconded. Frank? Further discussion on that? All those in favor? 400.
So in 1819, so 1718 is what it is. In 1819, we talked about the fact that our Title II federal funding that has largely been contributing and supporting our professional development was going away. You know, it's been dwindling every year. And, and we consolidated all three buildings into one dollar amount and we increased that for 1819 for the principals. We, I don't have an actual yet on what we're doing in 1819, but that's why that is new as of 1819.
That's a big jump.
It is an extremely big jump and it's going to be identified. So is there any other way we can? Well, I guess we have to go into discussion, right?
Well, we, we can do this now and then have a motion or whatever. Six of one, half a dozen of the other. So if, and I know you wouldn't put 7,500 in if you didn't think you needed it. But do you think you could get by with five?
It's a 500% increase, no matter what you do, it's going to be a significant increase.
Well, it's zero increase.
It's a red flag.
It's a zero increase. The 1718 budget is 7,500. It's a, it's not increasing at all.
Well, I'm looking at the actuals. I'm looking at actuals.
Okay.
Okay, you only use 1,437 dollars.
The budget then was like 2,100. Right, so we spent what, and then because we're losing the federal funds, but we...
Yeah, we're down to 42,000.
With 7,500, then we'll, we should leave into that. But if, if you want to live on the edge and go to 5,000, I think we should do that.
I, I, I'm fine with that. Let's go to 5,000, okay? Just know that we were at one point 120,000 and Title II, we're down to 42. So that's an area that I use for the principals, like maybe go to a conference or whatever, so. That's, yeah, I'm good with the 5,000. I think we can live within our needs and I think they know that also, so.
So I, a, a, a motion from Pepper? To accept this account at 5,000? Seconded?
I'll second that.
Frank? Move Pepper, seconded Frank. Okay. Further discussion? All those in favor? This would be at 5,000.
And that's the default, it's all for five, right? So you're going to leave that at 75?
Yes, that's the prior year, that's, that's how you, that's, yeah. So the, the proposal changed, but not the default. Default is the prior year.
No, the default says 2019, 2020.
The default budget for 1920?
Yeah.
Is the 1819 dollar.
Okay, and, okay, and the 18, okay, okay, you got it.
Yeah.
Got it, got it. Got it.
So telephone is a little bit higher than has been used the last two years, but you've got, you've got the layout right there, so...
So we, it's going down. What we've done, like I said before, is we've been able to get some E-rate money to come in and reimburse. E-rate's going away on the telecommunications side and it's really much above bandwidth now and above broadband and internet access, so...
So you're comfortable with those?
So, yeah, so we brought those numbers down. Cell phone is in here, we can't get E-rate for that. We've been able to get E-rate against the actual phone cost, but again, that's going away, so.
But your actual is 16,000. That's what I'm, I'm looking at. I know what you budgeted for, but you're at 16,000.
Yep.
And you're...
So the actual, if I went back, I would tell you that that actual was closer to 22,000 and we got E-rate money coming back from Uncle Sam that reduced it.
And you're not going to get that.
And we're not going to be getting that any longer.
I think you need to point that out in your, you know? There needs to be pointed out.
Move Pepper. Seconded Andrea. Further discussion? All those in favor? 400. Postage? Move Pepper.
Self-explanatory.
Seconded Andrea. Well, is, is the 2,800 because, I know sometimes the secretary buy postage in the previous...
They did it in July instead of doing it in June or whichever, yeah.
Is it one of those?
I think that the 1617 is the more, the more reflective.
Yeah, and I think that's the one we should look at. I'll make a motion, we accept it.
Uh, so I move Pepper and seconded Andrea. All those in favor?
And again, it depends on the communication and the need to get the messages out and how much postage we need for special ed, you know, it's all...
Okay, next one's pretty cut and dried.
Yeah, I make a motion, we accept supplies.
Move Frank.
Second.
Seconded Pepper. Further discussion? All those in favor? Dues and fees, that's pretty self-explanatory. Move Pepper. Seconded Andrea. Further discussion on that? All those in favor? Buildings?
Salary on the first page, we can...
We need to skip that.
Yep. We table that.
You keeping track of all these pages?
Yeah, I've got them all on the same, on a summary page. So this one I didn't include in the, this, it hasn't really been changed by the salary increases. So there's no, there's no body here. This is some additional dollars. I tried, I tried for the first three or four years we were here to drive Keith to do something in the way of, of a...
General maintenance.
General maintenance, a gopher or a doobie. I said, you know, somebody that can help you do some of the, put those shelves up. Fix that hole in the wall, like, rather than contracting for some of that. And our custodians do some. So this number has been flat right along. Really what ends up happening here is we, we pick up some, some small support from a couple of folks and, and he gets some clerical support during the summer months to help him roll all of his purchasing and procurement information from year over to year. So I, I like keeping it because I keep thinking we're going to find somebody, but this is really contingent on finding the right human.
All right, I make a motion, we accept it.
Move Frank. Seconded Andrea. Further discussion? All those in favor? 400.
Are salaries, are we skipping that?
So you'll skip that one, but just so we don't, there's two items here really that are relevant. One is the salary schedule and the two and a half percent that was budgeted for that we'll talk about in the aggregate. But we also have added a custodian here at Hampton Academy. So remember that we were in the vicinity of 80, 82,000 square feet at Hampton Academy before the project. We're coming out of it right about 120,000 square feet. I want to temper that by reminding that there's a lot of square feet in a gymnasium and there's a lot of square feet in an auditorium. But our hall, and our hallways are a lot wider.
You're basically saying you added one block.
We added, and we said this in the beginning, that we'd need, there've been some suggestions that one may not cut it, but we're, we have really said, we have to start by looking at one, figure out strategically how to tackle it and then make sure that we, we proved to ourselves why it should be any different, so. So there's a, there's a whole body in here.
Right. Which is fine.
Yep. But you can still deal with that when you get to the...
What are we going to do for the rest of this year?
For custodians?
Yeah.
We don't need it because they're not in the old section.
Right, we're not cleaning, we're not cleaning the, we're only cleaning the 55,000 or 60,000 square feet of the...
You got half the building.
Yeah.
So the...
When we go to the full building, that becomes another issue.
Got it, you're right. Okay, so I'm, I'm good. Substitute custodians?
Did we vote on it?
We didn't, we'll come back.
We didn't need to do it, we're back.
So you, you can see your actual in 1617, that's more predictive. Here's what happened in 1718 and it's happening again this year, 1819. With the tearing down of the sixth grade wing and the shortening of the building, if you will, we've had a custodian who has been circulating and covering subs and vacations and helping at the academy, but was also, and is also helping here. And so you don't see as much consumption of subs because we had a guy who could do it. And that's still the case, although he's got a bigger square footage that he's working on now as a part of the academy force, but we've left that flat. I think it'll be interesting to see what that looks like after we get into the building a year.
Well, I, I know you're looking at it as flat, but I'm looking at it as a $3,500 increase because your actual were 2017.
It's actually a $2,000 decrease.
No, yeah, I see that. I see that your actuals in 1617 was 6,500, okay? And your actuals in 2017, 2018 is what?
The actuals in 1718 are irrelevant because I had a, I had a salaried man who was available to cover substitute needs throughout the buildings.
Just?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's a great point. Just remember, when we reduced the amount of square footage at Hampton Academy because of the project, that allowed us to grab some time from one of the guys to do and fill in and mostly nights. Don't do that, no, your point is well taken.
Yeah, we'll have to do a better job, I think, of talking about zero-based and how we, we build the budget, we build the budget certainly with some assumptions based on, on our trends, but the budget is not based on what you see in the 1718 column. It's absolutely not what my 1920 is driven by.
No, no, and I understand.
And if we needed to do that, then I think we just have to, we should talk about it another cycle about how we spend the dollars, so that we can be attentive to that, right?
That's exactly right, that's exactly right.
So.
Uh, motion?
We gotta communicate that better.
I'll make a motion.
Moved Frank, seconded.
I'll second.
Pepper. Further discussion, all those in favor? Four zero zero. The next one is uh, overtime. And should we expect that to increase a little bit, because you have a better facility? I happened to go by the other night on the way to the board meeting, and there were teams practicing et cetera, et cetera. So I guess my question is, is forty-three thousand gonna be enough?
Well, the only time that we would have additional custodians would be on a Saturday when they have the games, because we have a staff in the building that night. They don't add another person on because they're playing basketball in the gym. And the same thing will play out when we use the auditorium, if people, I'm not, I anticipate that people will wanna use the auditorium. We have a staff on, it'll only be on those weekends that we have to do some coverage.
Well.
We're.
We're, we're budgeting for when everything's, for when everything's done.
For nineteen twenty is.
Right.
And I'm thinking that auditorium is gonna um, be a little harder to clean, I think.
Agreed.
Than the gym. Gym typically you can, you know, even off it.
If we have an outside group that's using that, they're gonna pay for the use of that.
Yeah.
So the only groups that will be using that will be our own, so when Center has a concert or Marston, that's gonna require the additional time to clean.
But the outside groups, when they're using it, what they pay will be used for the custodial services, will be needed during that time.
Yeah, that's both in, but my concern is, is there a way we can control overtime costs? Is there a way that we can control? Is there any way we can reduce this? You know, I mean, I, I understand what you said, and I understand it, but overtime costs is a variable cost.
Well, here we are tonight facing six to eight inches of snow tomorrow, that means that our guys are coming in at four o'clock. They're cleaning, every single doorway has to be cleaned, every sidewalk, it's that kinda thing, I.
That's fine, and we need to, we need to.
We'll explain that, yeah.
Document that, okay?
Well, it's in there.
Well, I, I, I think the way you're gonna do that is basically you're gonna have to document it, you know.
Right.
But as far as is people using the gym and all that, you know, they're gonna have to pay for that.
The problem though is, I think we've had that conversation, those revenues, when they pay, Bill Gates can come and rent the building for a million bucks, and I'll put that in as a revenue. You still have to pay the people, and you have to have a legal appropriation authority granted to spend that money. And so Keith, Keith and I talked, I challenged him and said, we haven't used as much of our overtime at Hampton Academy of late. Now, part of that's because we've only had half as much building, you know, if you look, if you look at last year, and you only had the one gym, and, but the other, but his concern is, um, one, uh, two things, one, we have no idea about outdoor snow removal, what that's gonna look like when the building is done. And it's, it's about the new sidewalks that we've got, and what that takes for clearing and for keeping up with it in terms of treating it and, um, and all of the, all of the concrete, uh, you know, paving, you know, out in front of the student entrance, places like that. His bigger thing though is, how are we gonna make out with this courtyard, which has porous pavers, and some of it should drain through, but when you get, not six or eight inches, when you get accumulating foot and a half or two over a couple weeks, and there's a part of that that's in shade most of the day and doesn't melt as well. Are we gonna be in there doing piecework by hand to move it, truck it, or what have you, and without having seen it and lived it, he didn't want me to cut it, um, so.
All right, that's fine.
Does that make sense?
I make a motion, we accept it.
Moved Frank, seconded Andrea. Under, under further discussion. Now, but we don't charge H Y A to use the gym.
No.
No, no, and, and we shouldn't.
Outside town groups or kind of.
Well, and you know, there's, what, what about Girl Scouts, I'm just trying to think of the.
Any nonprofits don't pay.
They don't, okay.
Um, that's the, that's where we draw the line, when people come in and want, and they're a for-profit, and in order to do that, they have to show me documentation that they are nonprofit. And also have to have an insurance carrier, and Keith does all of that.
He does, but the campaigns that come, when they're gonna use the gym and stuff like that, they.
But we've already had inquiries from the local dancing school that would like to use the auditorium for their recitals, I think that's marvelous. But there's a cost associated with that, because they're a for-profit.
Sure.
And they're not all Hampton kids, as well, so.
Okay, we've moved and seconded.
Yeah.
Further discussion, all those in favor?
There are gonna be other areas too, that we may have fees for, and that would be the community room, the same thing, but when the senior citizens are using it, they're not paying, they're coming in and they're doing whatever their arts and crafts, so special speakers, they have it. And so that's kinda the way we were thinking. I think when we get ready, I think we need to, Pepper and I will address the policy, and bring it to you on school use, and update it, and make it more.
There's a.
I think it's a good point.
One on the Connet's website.
Okay, he's there.
About, about their auditorium and fields and.
But I think it's a good point to say, you know, when the building is finally completed, and we do have our community center for, you know, that, cost is then incurred in that, because we're not gonna charge our seniors.
Right, right. Okay, water expenses.
Yeah, I see what you're saying, is what it is?
Self-explanatory.
Yep.
I'll move it.
Moved Pepper, seconded Andrea. The lead tests, do they do that every year?
Well, we're, we're going to be, under the new law, we're gonna have to test it and retest it, and remediate anything that doesn't hit the right standards. Uh, we've done a battery of testing throughout all of our buildings, we tested all of the water bubblers, the, the wa- the drinking fountains, and we tested the source faucets in the kitchens. And we found a couple of old, um, you know, like in the pot, the pot washing set, the spots, we had to change out a couple of faucets. Um, and there were some older um, bubblers that, um, that we didn't get around to testing, because we pulled them out, replaced them with the new, filtered with a little downspout for the water bottles. Um, the new law says every available source, so faucets in the bathrooms, showerheads, um, you know, classroom, classroom sinks, we gotta do them all.
Self-explanatory.
And then, and then keep doing them until we've had three cycles, so, um, the reality is there's no, uh, you know, we don't, I, Keith and I talked you through, and at the time I said, let's try to tackle, a building at a time, and so he estimated for me seventy-five hits at fifteen or sixteen bucks a unit to do each test, to take the sample. We have to test all of those before June thirtieth. Um, and so I don't know that we necessarily have to test at all next year, because it's a multi-year cycle, and we will have just tested. And so it could be a couple of years before we have to get back to it, so if you wanted to avoid that twelve hundred, I think we could, we could cut that twelve hundred out right now. Uh, and talk about that, talk about that another cycle.
I think we better leave it. I think we better leave it, you don't know what, you know, you get one issue, and then all of a sudden you have to have five tests on it.
And Keith is really good like this, because when we had, there was a, a lead discussion a- across the nation. That Monday morning, uh, it was in the news, and Monday morning that was being addressed. You know, I think those are the areas that parents need to be, um, secure that we're addressing, so I.
Well, you're taking some of those old sinks out of Hampton Academy, a lot of them.
All of them are gone.
And you don't know what's gonna be left for you, yeah.
There's none left, by the way.
Well, no, I know that, but you got the old building, and you know, there's residue in the pipes and stuff.
You're talking about the buried pipes, yeah, in the building.
Well, you find that in a lead test, I think.
Yeah, so I'd just say leave it in there, I, I, I make a motion to take.
So it's been moved. No, it's been moved by Pepper and seconded by Andrea.
Good, good.
All those in favor? Four zero.
And the next one is just.
Placeholder.
Yep.
Moved Andrea, seconded.
I'll second.
Pepper. Discussion, I don't think so, all those in favor?
Yeah.
Four zero zero. Okay, pest control.
Contingency account, when you need it, you need it.
Right.
What pest control, okay, what about the field?
Hold on Frank, moved Andrea.
Oh, sorry.
Seconded. Pepper?
Yeah.
Okay, Frank?
Okay, what about mosquito control for the field, back, you know?
That would be in grounds, which is the next section up.
Okay.
Um, not the next account, but the next whole section, uh, this is.
Internal.
Yeah.
Okay, got it, okay, got it.
Uh, been moved and seconded, further discussion, all those in favor? Four zero zero. Fire safety.
All right, this is a big jump.
Again, we, here's. Yeah, Keith and I didn't, we didn't chase this much, here's.
It's a three hundred percent increase. You, at, your actual is sixty-six, you're going eighteen, okay, I may be off a little bit, but it's.
I, it's, it's been eighteen for the last five years, so, um, the, the difference is, the, the difference is, um, you're welcome. We managed to stay under, um, the, the, the difference is, we, we had a period where, um, where we were spending significant dollars, not just to upgrade, the s- the space for fire safety, but process, um, new occupancy analysis of our, of our gymnasiums and our, um.
Can we cut it by three thousand? You're at eleven thousand, you're at eleven thousand, which is your big time.
I think you should, I think you should cut it by eight thousand. I think you should cut it by eight thousand, make it ten.
Make it ten?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, I, I, I'm willing to, uh, you, you were at eleven, so let's make it twelve, I'll, I'll compromise with you, let's just do twelve. That's six.
Is that a motion?
I'll make a motion to go to.
To what?
To go to twelve thousand.
Cut it by six thousand.
Is there a second? Seconded Andrea. I, moved Frank, seconded Andrea. Um, I just heard Nate say ten thousand.
Yeah, but you, your actual, and the reason I went to twelve is your actual was eleven thousand nine hundred, okay? It was controlled somewhat, but you don't know what's gonna happen with new fire extinguishers and stuff for the new building.
I'm missing the eleven thousand.
No, it's ten thousand, you just.
Sixteen seventeen. Ten thousand nine hundred, nine hundred, so eleven thousand, okay?
Ten thousand. Okay.
If you're gonna argue with about ninety-seven dollars.
I, I'm not, I'm not, but I'm hearing him say ten thousand. If I didn't hear him say that, I would go with the twelve thousand.
And I, I heard the same thing, and I'm, I'm looking at, I don't wanna be under budget on that, in case we have to pick up extinguishers, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm saying, let's give a, give them a little cushion, you know, that's a small increase over the last, over the actual fiscal year twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, okay? And we can do it that way.
Ju- just know that all of the fire extinguishes and all of that system in Hampton Academy is part of the project, it was, it's not.
No, I, I understand that, they also have to be tested.
I just want you to know that, I'm, I'm not.
Yeah, I, I understand that, but I think we should just put a cushion, it's six thousand, this is a significant cost savings.
So it's been moved by Frank and seconded by Andrea, that this would count would be, uh, twelve thousand. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Three, opposed, one, extension, none. Okay. Repair and maintenance to eleven thousand six hundred?
So for nineteen twenty, two things are true, one, there are new systems and, 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 um, and more systems, because of the work at the academy, but two, a cost should be modified some, because they're warranted, uh, in many cases. It doesn't mean that there isn't preventative maintenance and other work that needs to be done though, so there are some contracted costs. It's hard, because those systems haven't all been identified and installed, so estimating this was a challenge. What you, what you should know is that we made some increases because of the costs rising in actuals in the other buildings. Palmer and Sakard comes in and does our, uh, our plumbing, heating and cooling, H V A C, et cetera. But I've reduced the academy, because there are some things that we're not going to have to deal with in that cycle. So the net is a, a minor change of, um.
Three thousand.
Eighteen hundred bucks.
Motion?
I'll let the motion accept.
Andrea. Second?
I'll second.
Pepper? This is further discussion. All those in favor? Four zero zero. Property and liability.
I don't think you have too much to say.
Well, there aren't many other carriers out there than Primex, so.
So I make a motion, we accept it.
Moved Frank.
Second.
Seconded Pepper, discussion. All those in favor? Four zero zero.
So that's based on an actual not to exceed that we got from Primex for next year.
So you're under, you're estimating that you're gonna go under what your actuals were in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen?
Um, yeah, my rates are going down by thirty-eight hundred eighty-eight bucks.
Okay.
Or better, or better when the final analysis is done, but right now, they've given us the not to exceed rate of, of that.
Okay, supplies, it's pretty consistent there with what we spent in seventeen eighteen.
I make a motion, we accept it.
Moved Frank. Seconded Pepper. Further discussion, not much discussion on this one, all those in favor? Four zero.
And I make a motion, we accept electricity. That's basically we can't do anything about, that's the rate we're gonna get.
Moved Frank, seconded Pepper. Discussion.
What I would tell you in this account and the next, is that I have, I have done my, I've done my best, knowing what I know, to forecast what the academy will use. And I am comfortable staying put, so we're budgeting the same number as this year. Because I think that the efficiencies there, along with the rates that I've locked down, um, are going to not hurt us. Especially because the rates that I've locked down and the consumption in the other buildings have stayed under our projection, so I think we're okay.
Okay.
It'll be interesting to see though, once the, the building is alive and running, there's a lot of new machinery, a lot of new mechanicals, but they tell me they're efficient things, so.
Okay.
It's been moved by Frank, seconded by Pepper, further discussion, all those in favor? Frank, I'm sorry, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, sorry.
Heating fuels.
So no change here in what I think our consumption will be, but our delivery charges from Unitil are skyrocketing, or have over the last cycle. And so there have been significant cha- changes there in the distribution cost. Again though, and I've also, I've also eliminated the twenty-five hundred dollars, uh, uh, it was actually more than that, six thousand dollars that was, budgeted at the academy for oil for each year, because we took out our oil tank, and we don't have an oil burner on that machine at the academy. So I don't need any oil at Hampton Academy, uh, and so I have, I've adjusted those costs, netting the savings against the new distribution costs. But again, I locked in with Sprague through twenty twenty, and, uh, and so that rate should do well for us.
So the other two schools can burn gas once in a while if they want, or burn oil, and you, you know, play the market a little bit and get the cheaper. But you cannot do that at Hampton anymore.
We're not doing that at Hampton.
You can't, because we've replaced every day.
Correct, correct.
We, we, we backed away from the costs of, of dropping another oil tank in the ground, uh, and burying it on that site. Uh, especially seeing, you know, the risks that we've, that we face statewide and the concerns they have for that. And they made a pretty compelling argument every step of the way, that oil is just never going to be a cheaper fuel to burn. Um, and we've found a couple of times to play the market and do well with it, but, uh, the, the odds are against us, and the statistics don't favor making that kind of investment for that, so it's a good.
Right now.
Right now.
Never know, five years from now, okay. Um, moved Frank, seconded Andrea. All those in favor? Okay, four zero zero. Furniture. I guess my question on this one is, five thousand enough for the academy?
Uh, I don't think so. You need new bookcases, you, have you budgeted for bookcases and desks and everything?
There, remember now, in your budget, there's a hundred thousand dollars devoted to furniture, we haven't spent it yet. Um, and, but you're right, we are gonna need, uh, for instance, in the, in the English language art rooms, we, I, we, when we go through, we make some suggestions, and they don't have enough bookshelves, but we want those bookshelves to match, we don't just wanna bookshelf, we want it to match what's in there now.
Yeah.
So we've been talking, uh, the window mill did all the mill work in the, in the classrooms, they're gonna give me a price for additional, um, uh, bookcases for the, um, for the English classrooms. Uh, some of the shelving, um, that we need to have, like we just bought, uh, all the shelving for the art room. And, but that's really in the budget, all of that stuff. Uh, there may be some things, I have to be honest, with the teen rooms, I'm looking at some furniture that isn't desks and chairs and tables. It's a little, you know, remember, teen room is kids gather, they discuss, so they have their advisories, whatever, it's more of a, a room that they come together as a team and, and, and talk, whether topics or whatever, so I didn't want. whether topics or whatever, so I didn't wanna have to suggest.
Well, what we don't want is a brand new.
Building with used furniture.
With not the best furniture.
I was very clear, because that was.
Sorry.
That's okay.
That's, um, we made it very clear, that, that building couldn't have a shelving unit that had been painted for twenty years and was a mess.
So you're comfortable with this number?
No.
We, 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 we did not, we did not propose that we add to this line to, to generate uh, new regular budget, you know, operating budget for that purpose. We've left it flat, which is, I think, a bigger conversation about inventory turn in the buildings. The five thousand in each building is probably thin, and, and that moving forward, you might wanna talk about rotating out more of your classroom furniture more regularly with some additional dollars here. But our, our commitment has been that we would do what we had to do with the project, but that down the line, as the building opened, we would start to talk about continuing to turn, because we were moving in some.
So what, what is a realistic number? I mean, this is just a, a number thrown in.
So you wanna add another seven thousand, uh, six thousand to the, uh.
Seven, seven, seven.
To the bottom.
Seven, seven, seven. No?
No, because I wanna know what their actual needs are, just to throw in an extra two thousand, what's it gonna do?
If I were, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm just gonna ask the question. I think in most of the classrooms, if not all of them, teachers ought to get a brand new desk.
And they have.
The students ought to have brand new desks to sit at, and I know how much those cost. Shelving you've mentioned.
Bookcases.
Well, shelving and bookcases you've mentioned, but, because I think some of the desks and, I mean, some of the teachers' desks in there are kind of, uh, over the hill.
Well, the ones that you saw now are, yes, because when they move into the new section, the sixty-five thirty-nine, they're all getting new desks. But we didn't buy them right now, because we didn't wanna move those back and forth and we just used the old ones for this year.
Well, I think everybody's sentiment here, from Frank to Andrea to myself to Pepper, is that we wanna make sure we have enough. Now, if you think we have enough in another account, then we'll leave this one alone, but if we should put it in this account, we can do that.
Right, my only comment was, is that we, our enrollment has come down in the elementary schools. It hasn't at Hampton Academy, interestingly enough. I would rather put the money at Hampton Academy than, than the elementaries for this year. But Nathan's right, we need to now go back and do cycles on, you know, for all the schools, but right now, if I needed anything, maybe I'm gonna need an extra, um, showcase, you know, the built-ins.
Trophy case.
Trophy case, that kinda thing. Um, David's talking about a wall of fame, you know, that's gonna take some, and that's a community wall of fame, you know. So that, that, there's gonna be some expenses there, so if, and we're trying to be careful with our budget, with the project.
I agree with you, but.
Okay, how about six, six and eight? Six thousand, six thousand and eight thousand.
Well, I'd like to get a number from them, I mean, we're just throwing out a number, we don't have any, do you have an idea what a trophy?
Well, to try to be fiscally responsible.
Yeah, well, I'm trying, I'm trying to be fiscally responsible.
No, no, but I'd like to leave Center and Marston alone.
Yeah.
Okay, I think the big need this year.
Is Hampton.
Or next year, is gonna be Hampton Academy. So my question is, is five thousand enough?
Or do we need to double it?
What I would tell you is, I mean, you, I think, the hu- the difficulty in answering the question is, I can't recommend, how do I say that? I can't recommend that you make that number as high as I think you want it to be for what you want in that building. I think the project has to come up with some of that, I think donations might be collected for some more, we just didn't ever estimate, we never estimated to do, I mean, we want new cafeteria furniture, we want new classroom furniture, we never estimated, and so, if you look at the seventeen eighteen, you see the big number on the academy, that was new desks and chairs and a file cabinet for all the new teacher spaces in the new wing. Again, we didn't, we didn't buy every teacher a new desk, because we didn't wanna move the new desk and then move it back into the new wing.
And, and I understand that.
So you can see when we bought teacher desks and chairs and file cabinet, what we spent last year. So, making that number ten, or fifteen, is still not getting you to where you wanna go, and so the number would be way beyond what's practical. Because this is supposed to be an operating budget, right? So I think you could definitely increase the academy line, you can make it ten, or you can make it fifteen, so long as the bottom line of your budget supports. We just have to keep working to come up with other sources to fund all the things we wanna do, but then in the next cycle.
But we can do that, we can do that.
In the next cycle or two, I think you wanna bump up all three buildings, because we wanna do more, so for right now, i- if you feel like the bottom line will support making that ten, or twelve, or fifteen, but those are throwout numbers, because the number might wanna be more like forty.
Well, no, I understand that, that may be too far, okay, so let me, let me just say this, I, I, I think we should increase it by at least ten thousand.
You're talking about the academy line?
Just one, academy, just the academy, so make it fifteen to the academy total.
Yeah.
Increase it to ten thousand.
And again, it's all about your bottom line, because I, we can certainly find, we can find a way, we can find a way to spend that next summer, for sure, next fall.
I know, I gotta offset that.
But we weren't gonna ask for that, because we, you know.
I think we should make it fifteen thousand.
Is that a motion?
I make a motion that we move the academy to fifteen thousand.
So, so the bottom total is twenty-five thousand?
Yeah.
I'll second this motion.
And it's moved by.
And we'll have to find it.
By Pepper. That's gonna be fifteen thousand.
Okay, because that, that's.
Right?
I just wanna say, you know, we, our actuals in seventeen eighteen were thirty-one, so it's gonna be less than the actual.
Right.
Okay, and more palatable, so, am I right?
All those in favor? Four zero zero.
And we'll get back to those elementary schools next year.
Yeah, and I think Mr. Loney's suggestion is, you know, there should be some sort of a cycle, whether it's one classroom, we, you know.
One other point, we bought all brand new science tapes, those were very expensive, so those, but we bought them over the last couple of years, so we didn't replace them. They were in great shape and we just moved them over, and that was a big expense that we didn't have to incur.
Um, on equipment, I would, at some point, not this year, but at some point, can, can we get a, uh.
What's in this category, so we have some perspective on.
How long does the, do the scrubbers last?
Yep.
And how many do we have, and, you know, when do they get replays?
Some order of magnitude, so you understand what, are you doing seventy-five hundred against a million dollars worth of equipment, or against ten grand worth of equipment, that would help, yeah. Uh, Keith didn't, when Keith didn't recommend any changes here, but it's funny, because really what he did say was, you know, with these new floors, we're gonna need some new equipment.
Sure.
Cause there's a new, a different device that works on these floors.
That makes sense, yeah.
Makes perfect sense, except he's gonna buy those now, so.
Do they, does he use the ones that you ride?
He's not, I don't think, he's talking about a walk behind.
Really?
Yeah, I, cause I asked that too.
Those are fun.
I bet they are.
Okay, can we have a motion, Andrea? Seconded.
I'll second it.
Whoever.
Frank?
Take your pick.
All those in favor? Four zero zero. Staff training, that's pretty. That's pretty, uh.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we accept it.
We need to do some of it.
Yeah, moving Frank, seconded Andrea? All those in favor?
This next section, I referred to before.
Vehicle.
I'll start with, yeah, lawn mowing first.
Okay, so we contract this out?
The, um, across all three buildings, we did some work last year that drove the actuals up, but we, we don't intend to keep doing that the same way. Um, you'll see more of that on the next page, in grounds repair, uh, but Keith was happy living that flat right now.
Is, oh, I'm sorry, move Andrea, seconded.
I'll second it.
Coffin pond?
Coffin pond?
Is this also included mosquito?
We bury that, we bury that in the, we bury it in, in the account, we spread it three ways, I take it, I don't have an account separate for coffin pond, but I do it.
Oh, where is coffin pond?
Oh, sorry, oh, where's bachelor?
Oh, okay.
They have to mow around, they have to do three, three trimmings around that each summer.
I always thought that was bachelor's pond.
Uh, you know what, that's a, that's a Keith there, I mean, it's, I don't know.
Keith hasn't been some.
Let's, let's just bury that.
Yeah, don't matter. So, um, is.
No pun intended, coffin.
Not gonna affect my vote one way or the other, but.
Good one, Frank.
You know it comes up every once in a while.
Five.
Just put the body something.
It comes up every once in a while, how much do we spend on?
On bachelor pond, I just did that, remember, I did that report, or, uh, it wasn't too bad, it wasn't, because the only reason it was high was cause we had to fix the dam.
We don't spend that much.
Right.
I think it's like twelve hundred?
No.
Cause there was a crack in it, remember, but the rest of it was.
You might wanna put that figure in your notes, because that might be asked at, uh.
I would, put that number right there.
So it's been moved by Andrea, seconded by Frank, twenty-seven, three?
Yeah, I, I just have a question.
Right.
Uh, mosquito control? What the, is it in lawn care?
When, when we've done it, it's in the next two.
Okay.
Grounds repair.
Okay.
All those in favor? Four zero zero.
I didn't get the motion, who made those motions?
Uh, that was moved by Andrea, seconded by Frank.
Thank you.
Grounds repair. Do we, where's the poison ivy by the pond?
This is, we, we hit it, yeah, it's been by the pond, we've been out, we've had it at the academy before.
Really?
Um.
Along the fence?
So, so, part of this account, part of this account is, uh, obviously striping we do on the, on the, on the, on the asphalt. You know, painting, we paint the lines, we repaint those these year. Um, part of this is, uh, a lawn care, we have a contractor that comes in, it's Green World, I think, it's Green World. They come in and they do the treatment, um, but this additionally, um, has to, has to deal with, when we do the, when we had the costs related to the dam, and the dam had to be recast, we had to, that had to come out of here, um.
Yeah, but what I'm looking at is for the last two years, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, you were at roughly about forty-four thousand, you took us here. And now you're dropping it to thirty-seven, seven.
So it, it is thirty-seven, seven this year, that's the budget you approved last year that was voted on in March, and we're increasing it to thirty-nine, eight. We've been ticking this up, because the actuals have been beyond the budget every year running, but, but I, I, just, I, my justification cannot be that you should, that you should raise the budget based on everything that we find the need to do, because some of the things that drive this are, that tree fell down and I have to do it, that's what this is. We had to deal with the trees out behind the stand of pines out behind Marston, you see the actual on Marston?
Yeah.
For seventeen eighteen, that's not gonna happen again, because I took all the trees down, right, to, you know, some of the neighbors liked it.
I thought we just took some down.
That's it, that was, it was this summer. I, I incurred the money, because we made the commitment to the community, we made the commitment to the, uh, to the contractor in June.
But we've also had, when you look back, we've had on, at Bachelor Pond, on that land that went over into that neighborhood, trees came down, we had to remove them too, so. We had some winter damage, if you remember, we lost the birch trees, we've had to have somebody come in and do all that, so.
But you're okay with this number?
And I kinda look at these three accounts, this whole section together, so as long as Keith stays fairly close to the bottom line, even if he spends a little more in grounds than, in lawn than he spends in fields, or than he spends in repairs, I just don't.
I'm worried about mosquito control.
That's in there.
When we've done it, that's in there, now it hasn't been something, we, we don't do it every single year, we haven't, we, it, we did it, but I think it's something that make them back up, because it's been a, a worse.
That's something we really should be doing every year.
At, at Center, Marston and the academy, because you got little kids, you, you've got the increase of the Nile virus, okay, tremendously, it's moved up here. I think you've had, what, three or four cases identified in New Hampshire alone, especially in, towards Concord?
Yeah, we, we were pretty good on the seacoast this year, but we haven't always been on the seacoast, we've had incidences, so you never know.
I'm just looking at that.
Right, so. That needs to be done every year, I think.
Yeah, I think it should be done every year.
So what would that change, that if we were doing the mosquito?
Just in, it's spring and summer, you know, I don't care when the kids leave.
You mean like going in and doing the, the, around the buildings and around the fields?
I, I think the fields are more important, you know, for mosquito control, because that's where the kids play, the playground.
I'd have to look, cause I know we were doing it for a while, I don't know that we've done it every year, it's been, it's, it's been season dependent.
The last year's season.
That's my concern, the, you know, West Nile has been dramatic last year, it, it was identified in New Hampshire. Uh, and I am concerned, you know, and I think parents are concerned, you know, I mean, if it happens in their backyard, that's one thing, but I'm spraying like crazy at my backyard.
Should we add?
I can't pick, I mean, I, I can't pick a number out, I can't off the top of my head tell you, but.
You, in this account, thirty-nine, eight hundred.
Yep.
If you needed to, you could use it all.
Right.
For Hampton Academy, I'm just saying, okay, and you could probably not do lawn fertilization and poison ivy and whatever, and do all West Nile.
Yep.
So it's a.
It's a flexible budget, yeah, I'll buy that, I'll buy that.
So, um.
So I think it's.
I think we should, I'm gonna make a motion that we keep it at thirty-nine, eight.
And I'll second it.
Okay, so it's moved, me, seconded Frank, further discussion?
Just know that the board.
Has spoken about this, yeah.
Has spoken about this and.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you.
Any further discussion?
You know, we do get reports, do you know that?
Yeah.
All those in favor? Four zero zero.
So if there is a problem, we are, we are immediately alerted to it, and then we would.
Okay, playgrounds, fields, maintenance. Moved Pepper? Seconded Andrea? Discussion? All those in favor? Four zero zero.
So I, a big tick up in vehicle expenses, so we've got a, you've got a pickup truck that's an O-six in your food service.
Did I miss a page?
Yeah.
Ah, there it is.
You've, your pickup truck, um, facilities pickup truck has, you know, seven miles on it, but it's an O-six. I mean, our Hummer's got, it's a ridiculously small number, cause it only drives between the three buildings and never goes anywhere. And, um, and your food service van is about the same, but it, we bought, that was in twenty-ten, just as we were arriving that year. And, and the costs are going up, brakes, engine, I mean, it, it's almost worse that it sits and doesn't do as many miles, so.
What's the, you know, oscillance issue on these, I mean, technically, I, I don't think anybody would own, you got a twenty-ten here, you know, a truck that's been used constantly, that, that should have been depreciated and we should have been replacing it. I'm not advocating to replace it now.
Yeah, no, I mean, it, it's just, it's just the routine maintenance of them, uh, has, is getting more and more expensive, because some of the things that, some of the things that you and I would never get to on our vehicles, cause we don't keep them for, for, for ten years, or, or twelve years, right? Some of the things like brakes and tie, I mean, those things are coming back, tires are, are, I said tires, tires aren't a big deal, because these vehicles, I don't think the truck from O-six, I don't think it's got twenty thousand miles on it. It doesn't go anywhere, it does plowing, it does more in reverse than it does in forward, you know what I mean, so, it's, or at least equals.
Okay.
So I, I just, I ticked it up from two thousand we've had, but you can see what the actuals have been, and I went to thirty-five hundred.
That's fine, but I'm, I'm thinking that at some point, you're going to have to put in to replace the vehicle and get rid of it.
Moved?
Yes.
Moved.
Pepper, seconded? Andrea, further discussion? All those in favor? Four zero zero. Folks wanna take a couple minute break? Five minutes?
Yep, five minutes.
Okay, five minutes, it's, uh, five fifteen?
Yep.
Five minutes. Okay, we're back, we are on, uh, transportation.
Okay.
All right, here we go.
Is this a contractual obligation? Doesn't matter, because they changed the default law, and I don't have a new contract, and so I can't put any, doesn't matter for default budget, was what I was gonna say, so I can't put any increase in the default, even though there will be an increase, and I have to do this by law. So, so I have left the default budget identical to the current year, but that only covers what we're paying now in eighteen nineteen. I have heard suggestions that the costs could rise seventeen percent, because of new bus regulations, the, the chassis, the engines, and, and the, what the, what the contractors are doing. We have a limited number of contractors to work with, um, who are actually available to us and can find drivers and are doing business in this region. Um, I know that, uh, around us, SU twenty-one and SU fifty, who share the North Hampton terminal, they're all talking about bidding, and we've been kinda comparing notes about going to bid and trying to bring competition to keep the prices down. What I've done here is I have proposed five percent increase, and we'll do what we can with, uh, um, with the routes, to continue to have good service. In, in, I've been working on this, and I didn't make any changes, but here's what I would propose.
You're talking about a hundred and eight thousand? You're talking about a hundred and eight thousand dollar increase based on your seventeen percent possible.
Not based on your seventeen, eighteen, it would be an increase based on your eighteen, nineteen contract, which is six hundred and thirty thousand, seven thirty.
That's what I based it on.
Right, so.
It's a hundred and eight thousand dollars.
He's talking about with a seventeen percent.
Oh, with a seventeen, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh yeah, I mean, I, and so, and, and they're, and they're coming, I mean, it's, and it's not like I wanna go to somebody else.
Well, no, I, I understand, I'm not arguing with you, I'm, I'm saying that, i- if that's the case, okay? You're looking at seven hundred and forty two thousand dollars. As a budget.
I did.
And, and we don't have those numbers yet.
Right.
But if we go to the default budget, a lot of people are gonna be walking to school.
Well, so here's.
They can't, because it's law that we provide transportation.
Well, then where are you gonna come up with a hundred and eight thousand dollars? That's my question.
So, so here's.
Here's our strategy.
Right, here's, so.
We have a strategy.
Here's what I, here's, I can't commit to this, because we haven't done it, but here's what I'd like to do, in the interest of getting the proposed budget passed. Right now, we have ten buses that service at the academy every day, and then they add two in and twelve buses service at Center and Marston. We have looked at a ridership, and although I need a new contractor, I either need to be working with First Student again, or I need to have a new contractor to work with. We think we can probably find success in shaving one of the elementary routes. And still deliver everybody in a reasonable amount of time without any extension of any significant.
What are, what are your plans in shaving, you're saying shaving, shaving what?
A bus.
A bus.
A route.
A route. Adjusting the routes.
Adjusting the routes, so that I can. I could drop one, I could drop one of the buses, I, like I said, I'm doing it with ten buses at the, at the academy. With the numbers that we have right now and looking at the ridership, we think we can do that with one less. And so, I think that we, with the, with the value of a bus, and with an increase, I think we can stomach it. And I've been negotiating back and forth with First Student on the possibility of an extension, we had the regional guy in, with superintendent and me. So here's, here's what I'm thinking, I, right now, we did. We did a thirty one and a half thousand dollar increase here, a five percent. I think with a three percent, we'll have enough, and have the opportunity, and have the opportunity to stomach whatever we have to contract with. The more I put in the proposed budget, the less chance I get it, right? So if I only ask for a three percent increase on that number. Which would be an eighteen thousand nine hundred and twenty two dollar increase instead.
Which is what you're basically looking at, you're asking, uh, let's see, six thirty seven, you're looking at another twenty, three fifty seven. So you, this one has to come down a little bit.
So I would make this number six hundred and fifty six, six sixty seven, six five six, six six seven.
And you'll adjust the numbers above?
And I'll adjust the numbers above, and that will bring us in, uh, that will bring us in a savings. A savings of thirteen thousand.
Why don't you just round it to six five seven?
Cause somebody will ask me why, it's such a round number, it's never been around though.
Can we get a motion?
Talking a couple hundred bucks.
Six thousand fifty seven then. Six thousand, six hundred fifty seven thousand.
Can we get a motion today?
So I'll make a motion that, that count for six hundred and fifty seven thousand.
Second?
I'll second that.
Frank, discussion?
And now I wanna discuss.
Go ahead.
Assume. Ninety seven percent assumption, let's say the budget does not pass, we go to the default budget. Unless we can make them as extremely, as close as possible, okay? What happens to transportation, and what happens to the kids? You're gonna cut one route, is that what, is, is that what the?
You um have a bottom line budget, and that allows you to uh expend in other areas. And you would be, you have a responsibility to transport those kids.
No, I understand that, I understand that.
So we would have to take that twenty thousand dollar difference, and we would have to find it somewhere else in the budget.
No furniture.
Where, but I.
But, but you're right, that's the first place you go.
Where?
No furniture.
We can cut body, that's what we can do, that's even better.
I have a question. Have we and should we, has it? Is it time that we look into purchasing our own buses?
Okay, so.
No, I don't think that's a good idea.
Well, I'm asking him, he's our business guy.
I give you my, you're asking me for my professional opinion, I'll tell you. When, we are, you, when you take into account your responsibility for the driver, and drug testing, and training. And all of the safety and the liability issues, you take into account the, the challenges that we've had, especially in a solid economy, a performing economy. In finding drivers and retaining them. And you consider, and I consider, every example that I've known of business administrators and accounting staff. And principals and others, having the passenger cert or the C D L and being in the bus, because when the chips are down and you need a driver, you have to drive. I've, I have always heard from other, I've never owned my own bus, I've never been responsible for that in a, in a district environment. Everyone I've ever spoken to that's been in both has said, you'd never go back if you contracted out, because they take all of those stressors and worries away. And it isn't really a savings.
But it's not only that, you have to maintain a mechanic on board, you gotta have.
I know all about bus companies, you don't have to tell me, I know all about them.
But I haven't done it myself, the whole analysis.
How many buses would we need to service S A U ninety?
Probably, probably twelve.
Well, let's, let me ask these folks.
Well, you can't, the, you need to address mi- uh the elementary school, cause that, there's more buses at the elementary than there is at the middle school.
Right.
Okay, so right, what we've suggested tonight is we can cut back on one bus, which would bring us down to eleven. We could run the district with eleven buses doing double runs, just like we do now, middle school in the morning. And middle school first, and then followed by the two elementary schools, so you would need eleven buses.
Now I'm, we've been talking about this, this is the strategy.
You always gonna need one extra in case you have a breakdown.
Well, and there's the thing, right, so she and I, we, we are agreed, we think we can do it. If I end up with a new contract with a different bus company, and it's not First Student, and it's not Melissa, and it's, you know, we've been dealing. I, we may certainly walk right back in and say, we've been con- we've been talking with them, and we've laid out the routes, we've looked at the old routes, we've considered new routes, and we can't do it. And here's why, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm prepared to face the music that a, that we may contract, and they may tell us no, and they may show us why. But our experience says, we think we can, and that's where we're hoping that we can go for next cycle. But don't forget, it, it would be some, in answer, the answer to your question, you definitely would need your eleven. You'd need at least a spare, and then you'd need field trips and the like, and then you'd have to change your operational flow, because I would argue, you'll never be able to afford as many. Extra buses as you want to handle all the field trips, so you'd have to be better about arriving home in time. And not leaving for your extracurriculars too early, because I gotta do routes, and then I can go to all of the athletics and the like.
Then you would also have to put personnel on board.
So it's more than.
It, it might be.
It's a good question.
It might be worthwhile to, and it takes some time, a lot of time, I get it. To spell it all out, s- s- not, we, we can't do it now.
And I don't have to ring that the wheel, cause there's others that are doing it, right, that have done it, so I can start with somebody else's work and update it for us.
I, I would like to see. All of the figures, and, and I, cause I, I know our district real close to here, that's paying over a million bucks. For transportation.
Yep.
That's a lot of money, every year, you've got a million.
Well, we're, we're right there, we're at six hundred and something thousand.
So, I think it would be worthwhile, I know you.
I've never ju- I've never done the analysis myself, but it's, you know, but I've heard, so, let me get, let me get some of the districts. Cause I know that in, just in the last twenty four ye- twenty four months, there've been at least a couple of districts statewide that have talked about having done some of the analysis. So I, I'll start with the work they've done, and then.
I know, I know. Pushing one way or the other.
Yeah, no.
You just wanna have the information to make a good decision.
I think we owe that to people when. We're paying seven hundred thousand ballpark a year, and the next year, I mean. So we have uh six hundred and fifty seven thousand in front of us, given that we still haven't, uh, you haven't had a chance to finalize that. Has it been out to bid?
No, we've got our bids where, a, a neighbor has gone out to bid.
Okay.
It was a measurable increase.
Okay.
And what was the increase, seventeen?
No, wasn't as high locally, I don't think, um, Epping, um.
And that was with First Student?
Epping was twelve, thirteen percent, Epping was thirteen.
Okay, six fifty seven thousand in front of us, moved by Andrea, seconded by Frank. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Uh, you may be asked some questions about that. Special needs transportation?
This is, this is both our small, small bus, special needs transport, home to school to home every day. And it's our out of district for our identified students, um, in out of district placements.
And this is half the cost of twelve buses, right?
About.
Yeah.
It is.
Nothing you can do.
Not, can't we do some cutting here?
Again, why don't we look into this separately, or jointly, whatever makes sense? But for now, it is what it is, motion? Pepper, second?
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute.
No.
Okay, I'll second it, I'll second it in an open discussion, okay. Your actual cost in twenty seventeen was two hundred and twelve thousand, I'm rounding. And, and you're increasing it by almost a hundred thousand dollars?
Yes.
Ninety four thousand, to be precise, okay?
It's gone up from a hundred and fifty thousand in two years, gone up a hundred and fifty thousand.
Because of the population increase, so, are we, we still had that population increase that dramatic?
So, yeah, I mean, I think, this is, the, the numbers that you see here, the numbers that you see here are, are. With the exception of, uh.
What's a summer?
Summer school, summer school.
Preschool?
Summer, summer.
Summer school? Why don't we just get rid of summer school?
No, you can't, it's part of the R I Ps and it's extended school year.
Well, thank you for having me.
So, so these are, these are, I mean, I'm not, I haven't listed, right, I haven't listed the students' names and the.
I don't wanna know that.
Right, no, I know you're not asking, but I mean, behind each one of these, Jessica brought me a list, and here's, this is S L C going here, and, and, and the provider going here.
Can we cut this thing?
No. No, this isn't a, this isn't a hey, I'd like to have, this is, I got, I got kids and I got locations and.
Can't this be negotiated?
No.
You're up ninety four thousand.
I, I'm really up, I'm really up seven thousand.
Yeah, well.
Because we pegged, we pegged the eighteen budget against what we knew we had to do, and we're doing it today, and now we've seen, uh, we've seen adjustments of seven grand.
And could very easily become a lot more than that if the right people move in, or whatever we want to look at.
People, kids, and I need it.
This is like that tuition account, where I was like, I, you know, I got, I got eight kids, and they go to these schools, and this one's eighty nine thousand a year, and this one's a hundred and twenty thousand a year. And I can't change it, it's not up for discussion, really.
And this is one bus.
Oh, no, 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 this is buses and cabs and vans and horseback riding, and, I mean, I got pony rides, I mean, this is, no, this is really. This is a whole bunch of stuff, all year long, the out of district placements, the, the school year.
Private cabs we're hiring and.
No, 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 I was just exaggerating, what I'm trying to say is, this is, the, the out of district placement, I'd start there, let me just make, make sense to you, right? Out of district placements, you've got summer, that's students who are resident here, but who are placed in out of district schools, right? Out, out of di- private schools in specialized programs, Maine, Massachusetts, New Hampshire, they're going to places that they're. In the case of summer, they're not going to the same school that they normally go to all the rest of the year, there's a different cycle, a different program. And that's the busing to get, I think it's only two students, to those particular locations and back. And then the school year number is a combination of all the trips to and from all of these schools that we go to for our out of district placements. Out every morning and back every afternoon, and then.
E L P.
And then we created that new program we talked about last time, the experiential learning program, and we wanted to, we wanted some dollars. So we could take those students out into the community, to community events or community activities, and we estimated that. So there's an estimated number of eighteen hundred bucks, which is somewhere between a hundred and a hundred and fifty bucks each trip. Which, to your point is, we could do some analysis here, cause you could have, for instance, a twelve passenger van, or a, you know, a little mini bus here that could help out with some of the stuff. The freight costs over time.
No, it's not gonna be freight cost over time, by the time you get a driver, you buy, by the time you pay benefits, you're up to a hundred thousand.
Right, it's hard.
And the last piece is our in, trying to anticipate youngsters who need special transportation when the rest of their classmates are going on a field trip. And they need special transportation to go, and you can't deny them the right to that field trip.
So it's been moved by Pepper and seconded by Frank, the three thirteen, seven. Further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Highway school, I don't like seeing those come.
Transportation, athletics?
This is pretty consistent, I, I'll make a motion, we accept it.
Moved Frank, seconded Andrea. Discussion, all those in favor?
Do we have an area for, for wrestling at the, looking, some of the wrestling at the academy?
Well, they've shared.
It would be.
Space with Seabrook for the past few years.
Right.
But whether you could, you got the new gym, who knows?
They're, they'll be, instead of transporting them all to Seabrook, you said, facility will be, you know. But they go to tournaments.
Yes, oh, we have, oh, been there, done that.
Yeah.
And they often go.
They often go together.
They often goes, and some kids from Hampton Falls join, depends on the year. Uh, transportation field trips?
Can we cut some field trips?
No.
Moved Pepper, seconded Andrea, I knew you'd wanna move that one. Discussion?
Yeah, I wanna discuss, what can we cut? How about the theater performance in Port?
All those in favor?
That's an annual thing they do, seconded anyways, I don't, it's just.
Other transportation.
Okay, I, I need clarification on this, or we can go with the discussion.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Moved Andrea, seconded Pepper, discussion, Frank?
Yes, I wanna know about the thirteen thousand five hundred dollars.
All three of them?
Yeah, all three of them, homeless, to explain that to me.
Yep, so, okay, as simply as I can. I'm a student, living with my family, and we are, for instance, resident in Hampton.
Yeah.
And we become homeless, for any number of reasons, and we find temporary shelter in.
Rochester.
Rochester. We are entitled under federal law, I am entitled as a student under federal law to continue to be schooled in my home school of origin. The law basically says that the communities where I am from, and where I'm now temporarily sheltered. Split the cost if there's no other arrangement achieved.
Are we talking about like, an example, Epping?
Um, I, so I, it's all over the region. All over the region.
It could be Portsmouth.
Could be Portsmouth.
Could be Portsmouth.
Portsmouth has a homeless shelter, so I feel the same.
But, and, but it could be a motel room, it could be any number of things, I, I don't have to be, I don't have to be on a park bench, right? I don't have to be outside to be homeless, I'm just not in a, I'm in a temporary space that is not regular, but the alternative is also true, Frank. I might be a resident of Epping, and become homeless, and now be sheltered temporarily in Hampton. I'm, I'm entitled by law to keep going to Epping, Hampton and Epping share the cost of getting me back to Epping every day. It's the way McKinney Finto was written.
Federal law.
Federal law.
Okay, so that's, that's all, yeah, the same.
But, no, it's good, I mean, it's a great opportunity for the public to hear it, and for, because this, this kind of, this kind of is hard to peg every year. We're ticking the number up, uh, a bit, um.
We have, how many students involved in this?
I can't.
Number, number.
I don't know.
Forty, it's forty plus, yeah, if you remember in Janine's report, she was forty, forty, I thought it was forty six, but.
Okay, I thought it was one, but okay.
The idea is that.
So that's, that's what that is.
Kids who have been displaced and, and, okay, they have a hardship, and you don't wanna pile on by making them go to another school.
I, I don't wanna the theme.
Moved Andrea, seconded Pepper.
No, you weren't, that was.
No, he wasn't.
All those in favor?
I just think it was needed to be explained.
Exactly. And, good, on camera, yeah, it's on camera.
I apparently made sense, which is good, because I, so I've got it.
You did a good job.
Thank you.
Okay, health insurance?
So we have, I have actualized this for the people we got, right, and I bumped it by one and a half percent.
Is that a reasonable amount?
Yeah, yep, oh, it's the, I mean, this is the right amount, and I have added in, in the proposed. Yeah, yep, oh, it's the, I mean, this is the right amount, and I have added in, in the proposed, I've added in numbers to support the two positions that we're adding, that have the child family interventionist and the custodian.
Okay, I move that we accept this.
Moved Frank, seconded Pepper.
Huge amount of.
Discussion. The rates that people, teachers, parents, whatever.
Yep.
Those are contractual, their obligation, their percentage obligation.
Yes.
Is contractual, okay? And will be revisited perhaps when you negotiate teachers next year.
Yep.
Okay. Moved Frank, seconded Pepper. Discussion, all those in favor?
You have, just so you know, you have backup, it's part of the board package, that you know, you've got the plans we've got, the costs for next year. You've got the cost sharing between us and the teachers, and then you've got the calculation of the totals. On the next page, you actually have the same thing for the administrative corp group, for the para group and for the support staff, the non-union support staff.
Now, we, we basically matched everything up, right?
Teachers, paras, um, I mean, administrators, yes, last year you did that.
Administrators, everything, they're all in the same, same cost share.
Yeah, the, all of the admin, everybody in those categories are the same.
Yeah. I, I know about the.
You know, teachers have got multiple choices that are listed there.
Yeah, I, I understand that.
And you're, yeah.
I know they, they have multiple choices, but basically, if they're in one choice and, and the rest of the, uh, you know, not teachers, but other administrators, custodial, whatever.
Right now, it might be important for the, you know, as a public conversation, nobody in the district gets a hundred percent of their medical.
That's what I wanna know.
I mean, that's, uh, everybody's paying.
Their fair share.
They're paying, the rates right now, thirteen percent across the administrative corp and the teachers for the HMO, fifteen percent, I think support staff are paying for their coverage.
And that's a contractual option.
Yep, paras are, paras are twenty-five seventy-five that we negotiated in their contract. Uh, and then teachers have some, uh, legacy plans that are more expensive and they contribute more against those because they're more expensive.
Okay.
So when you work your way back, eventually you find your way to dental. By the way, there's a dentist.
Make a motion, we accept that.
That number. Frank, second.
You don't have to claim it.
That number's up two point three percent. So I've taken the people that we have and added two point three percent, that's, that's fixed.
Okay.
Moved Frank, seconded Pepper. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Again, for your reading pleasure, you've got the backup behind that.
Now, there's no, no vision, right?
Uh, there's no vision insurance, correct. We have a discount plan that piggybacks on both health and dental. If you happen to buy into and have the dental, participate in the dental, I think the discount under the dental coverage for di- for vision, if that makes any sense at all, uh, but Northeast Delta Dental has a vision plan that's five percent deeper discount than what Anthem has under the medical. But you can use either one and it's a discount. So under your, under your medical insurance, you get your regular routine screenings, your eye exam, every two years as an adult, every year as a child. But if you are gonna go buy glasses and buy contacts, there's no insurance to pay for that, you just give a discount.
Okay, do they know about that? I think you may want to.
Okay, we, we work hard to educate every year, yep. Yep, we work hard every year and then we put the flyers, the discount flyers in the open enrollment.
All I know is, I didn't use a discount. And, you know, people that I know pay extremely, you know, like seven, eight hundred dollars for a pair of glasses.
Now I feel bad, real friend.
Five percent would've been good.
Next page, life insurance.
Seven or eight hundred dollars for a pair of glasses?
Moved.
I'm glad I had my eyes to.
Motion for the life insurance, moved.
Moved.
Moved Pepper, seconded Andrea. Discussion?
Nope.
This is, uh, a- again, another cost that's locked in, we did a three-year deal, and right now we are with Lincoln National Financial Group for both life and the long-term disability.
This is term, right?
Sorry, what?
Term.
This is term life, yep.
And when people leave, that's it, there it goes.
Yep.
All those in favor? Four zero zero. Long-term disability? It is what it is.
Yeah, make a motion.
Moved Andrea.
A second.
Who gets long-term disability?
Everybody, pretty much.
Everybody who needs it.
Every, we're pretty much.
Oh, okay, so it, it, it's more of a voluntary thing.
It's a, the district pays, we pay a hundred percent of, uh, of course, remember, we don't have any, we don't have short-term disability, but we have sick leave. So we have a long-term disability that helps to, uh, after a ninety-day calendar waiting period, if you put in your claim and, and you are approved for coverage, it pays up to sixty percent of your wages.
So if, if we have an employee, so I can understand this, that's all I'm asking.
Yep, please.
I actually got this in the contract way back when.
If somebody has.
You have a heart attack.
Well, that's not long-term. Let's say you have cancer.
Oh, a heart attack can be very long-term, can be for a long time. And we've had at least three people that I know of that have used long-term disability because of heart attacks.
Okay.
And after they're out, sixty, sixty-six, whatever, long-term disability kicks in at what they, almost, almost what they would make tax, they, they don't pay taxes.
Right, I think it's at sixty percent.
Almost what they would make after taxes.
It's sixty percent.
Right, and it's a great benefit. The studies will, will show that people tend to use this more than they use other things.
Okay.
Moved Andrea, seconded Pepper. All those in favor? Four zero zero.
And it's.
And it's not big money.
And it certainly may.
No, no, it's not, I'm just asking the question, okay?
It certainly may help somebody who has a disability that lasts for the rest of their lives, you know, for years and years and years. But it has come in very handy for some of our staff who have had disability, disabling diseases or conditions that have lasted a, a year and a half or, you know, a year, year and a half, and then they return to work. But because you don't have enough sick leave to keep you going for that whole period, this helps with your compensation and then you can come back to work when you're ready.
Let me ask you a question, contractually, how long do we hold a position if somebody's sick?
You have.
Long-term.
You're talking, I mean, I guess what you're, you're, when you say contractually, you're talking about, um, a, a teacher, a professional employee that's contracted, right? Because anybody who's at will um, wouldn't, wouldn't necessarily be entitled to anything other than what Family Medical Leave Act would provide.
Right.
So you're twelve weeks. Uh, in the teacher contract, there are provisions for medical leave and extended leave. So although their benefits may end, that their compensation may end, and this long-term might be a solution, you're at liberty under the contract to, uh, honor a request and provide continuity under the contract for a position so that they could come back to it. But ultimately, at the end of family medical leave and at the end of what the teacher contract and the board's willingness, um, would extend, then.
When you say teacher contract, so if there's a three-year contract.
No, no, like your individual teacher contract, so you have a contract for a year of employment.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Right? And if in the midst of that year you couldn't come back and you took sick leave for a period of time, and then at some point you declare that your need for an extended medical leave, and maybe long-term disability kicked in, you would continue on that. The board could extend you another year, for instance, but at some point you reach a point where we offer a contract and you are unable to perform the contract, and there's no longer an extension of your leave, and then at that point the.
No, no, I just wanted a clarification, I'm not.
Yeah, so that was, I mean, that's basically the.
Okay.
So I'll just ask another question, related question. Somebody uses their sixty days.
Sick leave, yeah.
They make it to long-term disability. Does their health insurance continue?
Again, under your, under your agreement, there's a mechanism, there's a mechanism to do that for a period of time.
And who pays? Do they, would they pay a hundred percent of their premium?
Potentially.
Yeah.
But again, you've got the, you have some.
It's always been a kicker, because that's when people need it the most.
The most, right. You have some leeway there, for instance, in the case of maternity, we've negotiated language, maternity and paternity that says if you, if you're taking, uh, an extended period up to six months, the district will continue to pay our share and you can continue to pay your shares so that it's more affordable during that period. And language like that is often implemented.
I've, I've seen several boards that I know of. When somebody went on long-term disability, the board continued to pay their percentage until the end of the year, which I thought was very nice, but they didn't have to.
They didn't have to.
Yeah. Okay, FICA, pretty self-explanatory.
Yep, I'm, make a motion, we accept it.
Moved Frank, seconded Pepper.
Before you vote, I just wanna say, this is one of the accounts that when you get done talking about salaries, I will come back and make this number.
I figured that.
I'll peg it against this real salary. I don't give it to you guys, but I've got a.
But the rate of seven point six five percent.
That's right, I've got a spreadsheet with all the salaries, I'll update that and it'll update your FICA number to make it whatever.
Moved Frank, seconded Pepper. All those in favor? Four zero zero. Yes, four zero zero.
Okay, I make a motion, we accept the next one on retirement contribution, that's, that's a contractual thing, you can't do anything about it. Am I correct?
Moved Frank, seconded Pepper. Discussion?
I would tell you about this page, both the non-cert, which is your employee category, which is, um, full-time secretaries and.
All these three are contractual, right?
That's right, and then the next one, those will also change, because as you change your salaries, I gotta come reflect change.
Okay, I, I make a motion, we accept all three. Can I?
Moved Frank, seconded Pepper. Moved Frank, seconded Pepper for all three of them. Okay.
Nope.
Uh, we're gonna do a vote right now. This is for all three.
Right.
Okay, yeah. All those in favor? Four zero zero, four zero zero.
Just so you know, the New Hampshire retirement contributions that we make on behalf of teacher salaries is going up from seventeen point three six to seventeen point eight, that's a two and a half percent. But the other rate went down by, um, a smidge from eleven three eight to eleven one seven.
Yeah, I think we can thank our, uh, state legislator for that.
Workers' comp?
Uh, can we just, can I, can I make a motion that we accept workers' comp and administrative fees because it's kind of locked in, there's nothing you can do about that.
Moved Frank, seconded Pepper. Both of them? Yeah, there's not much we're gonna do about those.
There's nothing, but.
For both of them, all those in favor?
I'm just trying for simplicity of time.
One more section.
And then we got the.
Okay.
So, so the first section under the debt service is your principal. Uh, you can see that this year in eighteen nineteen, we have our last principal payment against the center school addition that was done back in ninety-nine. And, uh, and as you move to next year, that goes away and our principal amount goes up slightly for the academy bond. So that number is.
Okay, I make a motion, we accept it.
Moved Frank, seconded Andrea. Discussion, I think we've already had it, all those in favor?
So the next one is interest, right?
Yes, sir.
So I make a motion, we accept it, there's nothing you can do about that.
Second.
Moved Frank, seconded Pepper. Any discussion?
Only to remind you that the big impact that you felt in your taxes this year was based on increases in last year's budget that we voted, that just started July one. This is actually going to, if you, if you were to look back at your cover page, you'll see that the net impact of your debt service, of your bonds, your net impact is down a hundred thousand in this proposed budget.
Yeah, I think we need to make.
Because center school's going away, that helps.
Right, and I think we need to make that point.
The center school project, which we promised when we were doing this delivery of this project.
Moved Frank, seconded Pepper. All those in favor?
All right, on transfers.
You don't have to vote on that, there's nothing there, it's not really an account, I just wanna make sure that you are aware that we're not doing any, so.
Well, I, I, I know, but should we put a dollar in there, just to keep the account, nope?
No, because there's nothing, without a warrant article, this is really just where I stick my warrant articles, when you guys have had a separate transfer article. Food service is a, food service is there as a pro forma, it's a gross appropriation when we do the final budget. Your budget includes a gross appropriation, remember, state law says you must grossly appropriate for all spending, no matter what the source of funds. I go back to my Bill Gates thing. If Bill Gates comes and says, here's a million bucks, I'll say, thank you, can you bring it back next year? Because I don't have a million bucks of appropriation authority, right? We have seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of gross appropriation that covers our Fed funds, our IDEA Title one, two, three, or now Title four monies, et cetera. And we have five hundred thousand dollars that grossly appropriates for food service, although the food service program right now is running in the middle four hundreds, four hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred and forty each year, so.
Okay.
Um, the only thing that I will tell you about the gross appropriation there is that we generally reflect in food service the salary increases and impacts that you have in the district otherwise, so.
Okay, I have a question on that.
Yes, sir. Yep.
The, do the food service folk wear uniforms? And if so, did they give us, I see the shirts.
Yep, she does, she does buy, she does buy team, team, um, outfits, a team, not outfits, but shirts each year. But they also have aprons and such and uni- one of the vendors comes, it comes and they do the laundry of that.
So, for example, shoes, they buy their own shoes?
At least, yes.
Okay, and, so basically, they don't, we don't.
We don't outfit them fully, no.
That was my.
We have outer, outer garments like, like aprons and linens that we do some laundering of and, uh, and we, we do.
Well, when I saw that shirt down here, I was just curious.
All right, should we go to salaries now?
Well, I think we're done this.
No, we've got two, two items, but we need to do salaries and then we got the other item.
Okay, so we're talking now on how many accounts?
And did you do the numbers on, uh, on, I'm sorry, I, remember at the last meeting we asked to run numbers on one point seven five, two, two?
Right, and you got the handout, you got the handout with the pink and the green or whatever the colors were when it printed out for you?
Oh, I remember. Tonight?
No, last week, at the last meeting.
Looks like this, Frank.
Oh, yeah, I, okay, I left that in the car. I remember that.
So.
I may have lost it.
So, to walk the.
Oh, I got it right here.
You got it right here.
Go ahead, the pink and the green, got it.
Okay, so you don't have to, you've been, you've seen all these accounts as we go by, what I've done here, uh, it's a page I gave you.
From.
Yeah, but this is, this doesn't give me what the, what the dollar amount would be, uh, I mean, at one point seven five, what the dollar amount would be at two, what the dollar amount would be at two point five.
There it is. So. So in a, in a nutshell, the, every, every, every tenth of a percent is worth, um, salary-wise, twenty-two fifty, so.
Yeah, I got that.
So if you want, if you want one point, if you wanna know what one point seven five costs, it's twenty-two fifty times seventeen and a half is thirty-nine, three seventy-five.
So what's a half a percent gonna cost me? About ten, almost eleven thousand?
Twenty-two fifty times.
About eleven thousand.
Five is eleven and a quarter, eleven two fifty. And then I've got a, and then I'll reflect it with the FICA and taxes and retirement and all of that.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, uh, I'd like to make a motion that we look at the salary increase across the board of one point seven five. That keeps it in line with, with, with one exception. That would keep it in line with what's, uh, what the, uh, teachers are getting and what we are, what we propose to on the new contract for the Paris.
Moved Frank, one point seven five, second? Pepper. Discussion? You don't need to hurry this vote.
Okay, I make a, okay.
You've already made a motion.
Yeah, okay, so, are we gonna vote on it?
So what?
I just said, we don't need to hurry this vote.
I know, I heard that, but I.
And I heard Pepper say, I need a minute.
Yeah, I'm just.
So, all the green ones are accounts that, by the way I've defined them or categorized them, they're non-union. Meaning they're not, there's no, um, these are not para-professionals covered under the SESPO contract or, uh, teachers covered under the C contract, those union agreements. There's some other accounts in here that don't, aren't impacted by whether you say one seven five or the two and a half that I put in here, right? So you, so, but the, so the green ones all add up to, down here you see at the bottom, changes due to the two and a half, it's fifty-five thousand four hundred and eleven bucks. What I've done though to take out is, if you look back at the custodian line, I took out the thirty thou, thirty-eight thousand and change for the new position. Right? So I've backed out the, the new positions and the, um, because those would've, those would've artificially changed it, right? Some of these are a raw one point seven, uh, two point, two and a half, the what's reflected is a raw two and a half percent, meaning I have a salary and times two and a half percent, this is what the increase is. There are a few of them here, custodians and, and secretaries that have scales. So we're talking about moving the scale and then a couple of, some of them get a step in addition. So if you actually did the math and you divided.
Some people get three percent.
It's a little, it's more, if you divided the proposed, like, right now, if you take the total proposed change here, it's two point five four. if you take the total proposed change here, it's two point five four percent. Because I actually have, in the case of the special ed secretary, up in the top, like fourth line down, there's a negative. I hired somebody at a lower step, so the sale, there's savings there. So the average right here is two point five four right now, the, that's the total of what's presented.
I can tell you that the town average is three point three.
For raises?
Town average. We're not talking about selected individuals. We're talking the average across the board is three point three.
Well, this whole, this, this whole list is two five four right now, with a two and a half baked in, it'll be less with a one seven five.
And, and I think you have to compare apples to apples and oranges to oranges. I don't know what percentage of their healthcare plan, town employees.
And I'm not saying that, I've just put that out, but I'm saying that the one point seven five is kind of consistent because we have bumped them over the past. Remember when we did away with the merit? We built it in so nobody would be impacted, okay? So that's gonna be incorporated in this one point seven five. We have teachers' contracts that are at one point seven five, so I don't think I want to exceed that and I think we need to be prudent, prudent to the taxpayers who are gonna vote on this contract, that we're looking at a reasonable increase.
Is, is anybody arguing with Frank, other than Frank?
No, I'm not arguing, I'm just, I'm giving you my rationale, why the one point seven five.
Any other comment? All those in favor of the motion for the one point seven five percent change? Four zero.
All right, now.
So here's what I do now.
I know what you did.
You may have other, but what I've got to do is take, I'm gonna just tell you that fifty-five four, that the, the salary decrease that you just, you know, from what I had in the budget.
Point seven five.
It's, it's just, just over sixteen thousand dollars.
Which is fine, because.
And there will be roughly three thousand dollars in rollups, the taxes in Hampshire Retirement and stuff like that. So that was about a nineteen thousand dollar downward adjustment to the numbers that you guys have been looking at. And I'll go in and make this change on all the relevant pages.
Now, now we have to address another issue. So we need to address this contract and what that entails.
Okay, before we do that, is there anything else we need to do? Can you check those?
Yep, let me check this one. All right, so may I, may I, may I ask this? You just approved the one point seven five percent.
Correct.
Buried in that list and those table items were the two positions we've talked about, the child and family interventionist and the custodian, and you didn't vote specifically on those pages. So, do you want to go back and peek at those?
I think we need to. So let's just do the custodian first because I think that's gonna be fairly easy.
Twenty, twenty-six twenty.
Twenty-six twenty.
Page two.
Twenty-six twenty.
It's not two, actually, it's, that's key, it's four.
Twenty-six twenty dash four.
Dash four, halfway down the page.
It's the TBH.
Or I mean, oh, the whole, the whole way down the page, yeah.
To be hired.
TBH, that's the one.
Okay, so we didn't vote on this page and this page includes the to be hired.
Yep.
So can I have a motion on this page?
All right, I make a motion.
Moved Frank.
Take those pages, obviously with the adjustments that are going.
Seconded Pepper. Okay, so if we, if we approve this page, we're approving the hiring of an additional custodian.
Yes.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
And that hiring is for the academy, correct?
Correct.
So we need to make that.
Okay.
And the other page?
So we had another page somewhere.
So we want to go back to twenty-one twenty is the section. And it's the fourth page, I think.
Twenty-one twenty dash four, right?
Yes. So you funded, you funded this year a part of this with seventy-four hundred dollars from the grant support.
How much are we looking for overall from position with benefits?
I put in. Sixty, um.
Round it.
Sixty-two, sixty-two six.
Is what we're looking for.
I didn't, I rounded it up from sixty-two five thirty-five because I gotta do life and longer disability, those.
No, no, it's okay, I'm just looking at.
When you're doing that and you're doing benefits, it's usually around thirty percent, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I put it in the budget, so to give you the numbers that are.
No, that's good.
I'm looking at, okay, so it's sixty-two six.
Just for giggles and grins. What did we estimate the cost was gonna be for the new custodian?
Thirty-eight, I thought.
Well, I don't know if we did all of it.
Right, if I add in the.
Add thirty percent.
Thirty-eight was at one forty-seven. Forty-nine six.
That's right.
So we're looking at an a hundred and twelve thousand dollar increase to the budget on two positions. And that can, you know, I, I know we discussed it, I'm just playing devil's advocate now here, okay?
Well, can, just before you do that, Frank's right, about a hundred and twelve thousand. How much does, is a hundred and twelve thousand a percentage of our budget? You don't, you don't have a bottom-line budget yet?
Yeah, we do.
Um, I mean, I have a, well, I can take it as a growth over this year.
About one percent, less than?
This is where I need my big calculator.
It's, it's, it's just under half of a percent.
Okay, so call it half a percent. And, all right, what's the budget look overall?
Well, we just made some big swings, but it has been.
It should be under what we normally projected.
We're getting closer and closer to two point seven five percent. I'm hoping, I'm hope, I was hoping we were chasing two point seven five total.
So if we include both of these positions.
That's it, that's included.
But, okay, so instead of it being up two point seven percent, it's gonna be up two point seven five.
Right.
Oh wait, well, we made some adjustments though in the.
Right, well, I'm looking, my draft, my draft was two eight eight, but we've been taking two point eight eight including these. We've been cutting out some other things tonight, so I'm hoping we're getting closer to two seven five. And without them, it would be two seven.
So, if we, just so that we have the numbers in front of us, if we did not do the sixty-two six.
Or the forty-nine six.
Well, I'm just gonna take them one at a time.
Okay.
Take them one at a time. It was gonna be two seven oh.
Or two six five, roughly, right? Now, both of them are point oh five, right?
Together, they're point oh, uh, they're point five percent.
So you're looking at, okay.
The sixty-two six-ish.
So you're looking at a two point seven or a two point seven two five?
Oh, I might, you.
I'm sorry, ask again.
So if we, if we did this.
Yep, you did both of those.
But we did not do that, what would the percentage be?
Oh, point two seven two?
Is that a?
Pretty close, yeah, because that's a little less than half.
And I'm guessing the other one, fifty thousand would be, what, two seven one?
Yeah.
All right, so let me ask you this other question while he's doing those numbers. If we go to a default budget, okay, what takes place with these two positions? As well as everything else in general, but in your estimated opinion.
So what, what happens is, if we're in a default, we have to contemplate the difference between the plan that we had in the proposed, which includes these two.
Yeah.
And the dollars we have in the default. And then we come back to the board and say, we still think we should do a custodian.
We just have to find them.
We just have to find it, and so other things have to be adjusted.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know, that's what I wanted to know. And I wanted to know what the percentage was, okay, playing devil's advocate because, to be quite honest with you, I don't know. I need to see the whole bottom-line number.
Right.
And how palable that's gonna be.
We voted on the custodian already.
We did.
Okay, so can I get a motion on forty-five oh eight two?
I make a motion, we accept it.
Moved Frank, seconded Pepper, further discussion? Um, any further discussion on that? All those in favor? Aye, four zero zero.
All right, should we go into non-public or just talk about, oh yeah, you're here.
I think we should go to non-public.
All right, we're gonna go into non-public under RSA.
Okay, I need a motion to come out of non-public.
I make a motion, we come out of non-public.
Moved Frank, seconded Pepper, roll call, Frank, yes?
Yes.
Aye.
All right, we're back in session. I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the three-year contract offer at the percentages that we put in. And the other change that we made, one other change that we made. Frank, second, all those in favor? Aye, make a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Frank, seconded Pepper, all those in favor?
Okay, welcome everybody to this last session of our budget hearings. Open the meeting at four thirteen. We should stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, five is in back of us.
High Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, we have an update from Mr. Lanny on the operating budget.
Excellent, so at your last meeting, we finished up your review and what I said we'd do, I would do next is complete the project, bring you back a final number and a final brief analysis to make sure that you had it on the shelf over there, the budget books for the Budget Committee. I'll make any adjustments we have to, but here, let, let me just take a brief second and walk through. The current budget's twenty-two point nine million dollars for eighteen nineteen. We always build first in the default and then requests beyond that. So if I walk you down through that single page, item number two is the default increase. And as we reviewed, walking through, there is the experiential learning program and an additional preschool paraprofessional. We talked about out-of-district tuitions and transportation for special needs students. Special education costs in total are rising by two hundred and fifty-three thousand six hundred and eleven dollars. And that's a big chunk of the default. Other changes in that default that we reviewed as we walked through, cumulatively, there are teacher collective bargaining agreement changes. There's a pay scale that was in your budget book, and so there's an adjustment there. Our debt service is actually going down and we knew that. This is the, the year after we've paid off center school. So we have a benefit there of about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Health insurance is up one point five percent. All other benefits are increasing by about eighty thousand dollars and that includes the New Hampshire retirement system, our contributions against teacher salaries going up by two and a half percent. And the net of all of the other changes was about ten thousand dollars. Those, those categories collectively a hundred and fifty-five thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars. So the default budget is an increase of four hundred and nine thousand five hundred and forty-eight dollars, bringing us to twenty-three million three eighty-seven, one eighty-eight. That's a one point seven eight percent de, uh, increase over the, over the preceding year. So we've built the default, and again, that's just a, that's just an accumulation of everything that we talked about walking through. I draw your attention to item three, which is the proposed increase. This is, these are the requests over and above the default. We talked about the child and family interventionist position and the custodian position at Hampton Academy. We talked about payroll adjustments throughout, including the reduction of that merit bonus account that we have used in the past. We've increased in the area of substitutes. There's an increase in after-school activities and we talked a lot and made an increase in furniture accounts. And then there was a non-union salary and wage increase. That's across categories of administration, clerical, secretarial admin support, custodial and technology team. And the agreement was, you'd like to see one seven five, one point seven five percent. Made all of those changes with all of the relev, all the related benefit changes. All of that combined is an increase of a hundred and ninety-eight thousand two hundred and fifty-two dollars, which by itself is a point eight six percent increase. When you put that on top of the default changes, it brings us to a total proposed budget of twenty-three million five hundred and eighty-five thousand four hundred and forty dollars on line four, which is in the aggregate a two point six five percent increase. Driven by, driven by our identified population, special education costs, driven additionally by costs, some costs related to the project that we knew, the, the building is bigger, the Hampton Academy custodial position we had talked about in the meeting. But that is the summary of everything that you did over those last three meetings. And if there's any questions, I'm certainly ready to answer them but would hope that we could come away with a final decision tonight in the budget.
We've been through all this, we've spent hours going through it, so I don't think there's anything surprising here. In fact, it's down from what we had thought it might be. So I think we need a motion to accept the final budget. Should we put the two point six five percent in the motion?
Yes, please.
I make a motion, we accept the proposed budget for two point six five percent increase over last year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Pepper, discussion?
I have one discussion.
Basically, what you're saying to us now, Nate, is that we have in the default budget a one point seven eight percent increase based on contractual obligations, period, right?
Yes.
Okay, best, I want a clarification just for the audience.
Yeah, the.
And federal mandated.
Federally mandated programs like our special education costs driven by IEPs along with, along with our collective bargaining agreements, yes.
Just want to clarify that for the audience.
Further discussion? All those in.
Is there a second?
Oh, I think Pepper did.
Okay.
Again, further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Okay, and I think at this time, I need a motion to go into non-public to discuss the superintendent's evaluation. Moved by Pepper, seconded by Frank, roll call, Frank.
Yes.
Andrea, Virginia, Pepper and myself.
All right.